As we hear the national anthem of the West, followed by the national anthem of the United States.[14.84][15.24](Music)[17.24][18.44](Music) Please, please, thank you. For those of you who don’t look right now, my name is Melina Kortis. I’ll be a huge honor of being the moderator for this evening’s program. I am a native child, daughter of Guyana specifically. I’m proud alumni of President’s College. And so it’s been since here. So all the PC kids here, give us a clap. You know, we always say, you know, students of President’s College are going to change Guyana in one year or another. And we are living that reality today. And so at this time, I’m going to invite Ms. Malika to introduce our guest speaker for afternoon.
Thank you, Melina. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alava Phillips Peters. And it’s my privilege to introduce our guest of honor this evening. I am also a proud alumni of President’s College to be here to support our fellow women. Amanda O.R. Walton Vazir, LMN MP. Raised in the mining town of London, Ms. Vazir’s journey has marked by a series of pivotal roles that have shaped her into the girl that she is today. Attending both McKinsey High School and the prestigious President’s College, she graduated with honors from the University of Guyana, with a bachelor’s degree in law. She later continued her journey of academic excellence, culminating in the master’s degree with distinction in the International Maritime Law from the prestigious International Maritime Law Institute in Montauk. Her scholarly pursuits were further enriched by a postgraduate degree, a certificate, excuse me, in legislative drafting from the University of Guyana, and a postgraduate legislative legal education certificate from the U. Woody Law School in Trinidad and Tobago. And several other certificates, including an executive certificate in space leadership, business and policy from the Tantabur School of Global Management. As a legal professional for the last 20 years, Amanda’s professional trajectory is characterized by her exceptional leadership in the field of maritime and aviation law. She has served as legal advisor to several government agencies and as director of a number of state orders. As general counsel of the Guyana Civil Aviation Authority, the GCAA, she spearheaded transformative initiatives that elevated Guyana’s aviation sector internationally, ensuring compliance with stringent safety standards set by the international civil aviation organization, the ICAO. She continues to be a roster legal subject matter expert with the ICAO. In addition to her professional accomplishments, Amanda is a devoted mother and community leader, deeply rooted in the traditions of family and service. She’s a lover of the outdoors and the arts. Her advocacy for the rights of the poor and working class, her special focus on the empowerment of women and youth, and her unwavering dedication to forging inclusive democracy exemplify her commitment to building a better future for all Guyanese. Her commitment to empowering women as leaders resulted in the founding of WISE, Women in Leadership Support and Empowerment, an organization dedicated to providing support, resources, and advocacy to empower women in politics. WISE aims to ensure that women thrive in their leadership roles while prioritizing their physical and emotional well-being and mental health. As a member of parliament and shadowing staff of foreign affairs and international cooperation, Amanda continues to champion diplomacy and global engagement, leveraging her expertise to shape politics that advance Guyana’s interests on the world stage. Her leadership within the People National Congress Reform, the PNCR party, as an executive member, coupled with her tireless advocacy for social, economic, and environmental justice, serves as an inspiring beacon of hope for present and future generations alike. Amanda Walton Vazir’s life and work embody the values of integrity, compassion, and resilience. Through her unwavering dedication to justice, diplomacy, and community empowerment, she continues to inspire positive change in Guyana. Everyone, Amanda?
Good afternoon, everyone. And thank you very, very much, you know, I could hear your kind words of introduction. I was wondering who she was speaking about. And then she said Amanda, so I figured, yes, that would be me. And thank you to our able moderator, this is Melina Kortis, one of the best immigration lawyers you will find here in the city of New York. Thank you so much for being here. I see some of my friends from the continent of Africa here. Thank you so much for being here, guys. And I see some of my Trinidadian friends here. Thank you for being here. And thank you, my Guyanese brothers and sisters, for the opportunity. I see a lot of my president’s college folk. So, thank you. This is humbling. One would think that you tend to get used to speaking to the audience. It’s old after a minute. But seeing faces and stuff like that, I know since I was a child, that I grew up looking up to Mr. Leslie Bird and, you know, my childhood friends in the back there. It’s very, very humbling. And I am indeed grateful to be here. So now that we have gotten through the pleasantries, let’s get down to business. I am a walker, walker, I can’t stand me, I’m a podium. It’s very, very difficult in parliament for us to just stay in one place. So if you’re in a gulch, I’d love to, you know, be able to interact. But I would begin by saying that, Guyana, we’re in a crisis. I want you to close your eyes with me for a moment and relate to the darkness that you see when you close your eyes. Because that is what we experience for at least eight hours a day now, back home. You know, I’m sitting, I’m talking with one of my colleagues and they were talking about the only true constant in life is change. And I said, I’d like to add GTL to that. Because we guaranteed that they will give us blackouts. But really, you know, being bright about GTL, the one we don’t see is that GTL really is a microcosm for exactly what is happening in Guyana. Darkness, mismanagement, incompetence. And just like how we can say that, oh, GTL needs new management, Guyana too needs new management. And so this is why, this is why we are here, the diaspora reaching out to you. Because it is important that we engage you. We are literally in a crisis and there’s so much happening all at the same time. Last year, we were the fastest growing economy in the world. And you saw that in later in the magazines and all of the fancy world projects being launched. And I think this year, we’re the second fastest growing over taken by, you heard what I think it is. At the end of 2024, our GDP per capita will be between $24,000 and $25,000. So make no mistake, things are happening. The question is, who is it happening for? Because it certainly is not for an ordinary hardworking Guyanese man or woman. And so we have a crisis. We have a crisis of food insecurity. The last study done by the FKO and the UNICEF, I think it is, showed that the 58% of Guyanese are food insecure. 58%, what does that mean? It means that 58% of Guyanese do not have more than one nutritious meal per day. Now, those are just the facts. This is not Amanda making this up, these are the studies. But our GDP is growing. Guyanese are hungrier by eating. Something is wrong with that. Something is wrong with that. And so we’re in a crisis. In a crisis because our education system is collapsing. There is no effort being put into retaining our teachers. And I mean, to those of us who were educated in Guyana, you know, we have some of the best teachers that are coveted around the world. But we have a government that doesn’t seem to think that they should pay our teachers a little wage. I feel GTL has sent somebody. Yeah, so we’re talking about the education system and the virtual class. I mean, anybody who’s been following the news in Guyana knows that the teachers were in strike for almost five weeks. And then they returned because this government is showing no willingness to collective bargaining with our teachers. So they could have little wages. We know our nurses are fleeing in droves, not because they want to, but because it is a question of their survival. And so we are in a crisis. We are in a crisis. Infrastructure work. We’re spending 58% of the last budget on infrastructure alone. 58% with an efficiency gap of 41%. So if every dollar we spend on infrastructure, 41 cents is wasted. And so those are the realities. And so, you know, we have a head of state who seems content to travel around the world and collect awards and, you know, from various continents and believes that Guyana could be governed by viral videos and viral movements. It does not work like that. And so, we have a crisis. Domestic violence is on the increase. Run accidents are on the increase. You go to Guyana and dig trucks on the road. One of the scariest experiences you will have. And so, we are, like Paul said, besieged on every side. And we talk about being besieged on every side. We have a Western leader just passed the law saying that 2/3 of our country now delivers to them. And so we have trials, both foreign and domestic. I am a member of parliament for the APNU, AFC. And I belong to the largest party in the coalition. And it is no secret, because it is now widely known, that there are issues there too. There are issues there too. And I am not one, and I’ve always been very steadfast, that I do not discuss internal party matters. But there are matters out there in the public that have to be addressed. The current state of affairs is wholly unacceptable. And feel free to quote me on that. Wholly unacceptable. We have a nation that is in crisis and it behooves us to get ourselves together. Look, contrary to what you might have been told, I grew up in the PNC. You know, my parents served, my uncles, my aunts served the PNC, so I grew up in a legacy of service. I grew up at the feet of women like Lynette and Celeste Dalton. They taught me to eat with a knife and fork. They taught us that we had to elevate my sister somewhere in the country and she would tell you that at eight and nine, we were the young people that did the cultural items. At Congress, when it was held in Safaya, I remember one year, I think it was just after the Fongalida had died and it was the first Congress for Desmond Hines. And we had to go learn a poem. And we had to say that poem. And one of the verses I always remember is, “A man born to lead has no choice, even if he has no followers, followers of a kindred spirit. Knowing the value of the side that comes, knowing when to render out the season, and to control the money changers.” There’s a poem written by Celeste Dalton for the first tenure of Congress, which, after the passing of Fongalida Burnham, at the age of seven, eight, nine, 10, he had to be a part of what was called the Young Developers. I don’t know if anybody remembers the Young Developers. We had to go, go to the scene. “We are the Young Developers and proud to be involved.” The leaders of our country, co-opted in this country. “We are the Young Developers and proud to be involved.” And so, I grew up there. But I also have to acknowledge that we have to change. We have to change. We have to become the party of the future. Insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. I am not prepared to accept that. I’m not prepared to hear this is how it has always been done. So this is how we have to do it. We have to change. Anything that cannot change will die. And Guyana is depending on us to be the proverbial deliverers of our people. And so we have to get it together. And so this unity has to be addressed. And as leaders, we have a duty to address it, not after a Congress, but now, whilst we are leaders, now we must defend this, now. Because there are people who are looking to us to confront a regime that has determined that it will treat Guyanese anyhow, that it will decide who gets the patrimony of Guyanese. And so we have to keep our eyes on the ball. Now, I am an elected member of the Central Executive of my party. And I’m prepared to say publicly that we cannot condone this unity, that this unity has to be frowned upon. But it comes about because we appear not to be able to accept and appreciate that everyone has a role to play. Every member, like a hand, like a hand, every finger has a role to play. And so, for one, and I am a woman in the party, I do not stand for the attack on a fellow woman. And so I denounce the attacks on Miss Ann Ali. We have to achieve this culture of attacking the women in our party. Everyone of them is important. For the PNC and Ann Ali is important. For the PNC of our land, Lawrence is important. For the PNC, Akaris Joseph is important. And they all have an important role to play. And so it is really sad. But I think from today, we will see a return to our respective corners and the prevailing of good sense. Because we have a nation that is depending on us. And every one of us has a role to play. I am sick and tired of who just come and who turn. The PNC is not something that we take turns at. It is a party that has to be agile, that has to show that it is capable of moving and changing as the times demand. So, we have to borrow the word of my dear friend Roy Ruh. And we have to understand that a lot is riding on us because we are in a crisis. So, the good part of it though, is that, and you know, I love to refer to eastern philosophy. In Japanese, the word crisis also equals opportunity, right? And so we’re looking at it, and yes, it’s bad. But in this seeming hopelessness, what is the opportunity that we are presented with? At the national level, we are presented with the opportunity of, for the first time, ensuring that every Guyanese man and a child is able to live and enjoy a quality of life that, from since independence, we’ve not been able to. It is an opportunity for us to ensure that we’re building a country not based on, frankly, one man’s idea of what a project should be, but a country that is developed, pursued, plus some economic strategy. That is what we have the opportunity to do. We have the opportunity to make sure that Guyanese first enjoy the patrimony of Guyana and then we share with our neighbors and the rest of the world from our overflow. But to do that, it requires a government that is committed and truly believe that we in the PNC, we in the APNU, because I want to be very, very clear, that coalition politics is the politics of the future. So let there be no doubt as to whether we, you know, in the part playing with who the AFC is going to come at. We are together in the National Assembly now. And I am persuaded that we will remain together. Because it is the politics of the future and we cannot design and we cannot build a Guyana unless we are guided by one Article 13 of our Constitution says that the aim of the political system is to build an inclusionary democracy. And if we want to see that, then as a party, we have to continue to be committed to inclusion. I reject these attacks on the PNC, that it is somehow a party that is racist in its orientation. And I remind you, Dennis Chivas BPP, that continues to send their minions to stoke, you know, seeds of discord. The two first officers of the PNC, Miss Barnes Burnham and Ashwin Zeng. I’ll remind them of the likes of Kabi Ramseru and all of these towered swerve East End niggas that faithfully serve. I’d like to remind them of Ann Ali. That irrespective of what you may think, a servant has given her blood, sweat, tears in service to the party, and we have to honor that. You might not agree with somebody’s view, but you have to respect their right to have the view. Because it is their view, it’s not yours. You have to respect their right to have the view and you have to respect their service. This culture of rejecting leaders that we feel, you know, no longer, you know, in favor with us or serving us, we have to reject it. We have to honor those who have gone before us. We have to thank them for their sacrifices. And we have to pledge to the younger generation, to the next generation, that we will learn from their failures, we will honor their sacrifices, and we will pick up and we will carry on and we will build a party that is stronger and better. Because as goes the PNC, goes Guyana. So with those welcoming words, I hope. unless we are guided by one Article 13 of our Constitution says that the aim of the political system is to build an inclusionary democracy. And if we want to see that, then as a party, we have to continue to be committed to inclusion. I reject these attacks on the PNC, that it is somehow a party that is racist in its orientation. And I remind you, Dennis Chivas BPP, that continues to send their minions to stoke, you know, seeds of discord, that the two first officers of the PNC, it was Parnes Burnham and Nacho Zayn. I'll remind them of the likes of Kabi Ramsoo and a lot of these cowards who are eastern healies and that faithfully serve. I'd like to remind them of Ann Ali. That irrespective of what you may think, has served and given her blood, sweat, tears in service to the party, and we have to honor that. You might not agree with somebody's view, but you have to respect their right to have the view because it is their view, it's not yours. You have to respect their right to have the view and you have to respect their service. This culture of rejecting leaders that we feel, you know, no longer, you know, in favor with us or serving us, we have to reject it. We have to honor those who have gone before us. We have to thank them for their sacrifices. And we have to pledge to the younger generations, the next generation, that we will learn from their failures, we will honor their sacrifices, and we will pick up and we will carry on and we will build a party that is stronger and better. Because as goes the PNC, goes Guyana. So with those welcoming words, I hope, I think we will now open the floor to questions, guided by Madame Moderator. I'll hand the mic back over to her as I am here. And we have to answer whatever questions you may have. Thank you so much.
We should be asking this, why is she running for president of Ann Ali? No, that's my first question. Anyway, at this point in time, we would like to collect information of persons who are here, so we'll give some information she passed around. Please include your contact information so we can follow up with you. But I prefer having any related events. So thank you. I want to invite anyone who have a question for Mrs. Muzier, please come on this side. And we will have you ask your question. Please keep it brief. This is not an opportunity to confront anyone. Please make sure that your questions make sense. Hopefully you might have a sensible answer. Okay, and we will try to be all very respectful. So yeah, of course, question.
Thanks ever so much. Honorable answer, those at the head table. Thank you for taking the time to come and greet us and engage the diaspora once more as the Shadow Minister of the PNCI, a part of the Coalition, and member of parliament. It is admirable to see women in leadership because there is such an imbalance worldwide, as many of you will know. I am Belita Montecue. I am a first advocate and activist for women and youth. I am the Chair of the Women's Eye of the PNCI in the North America region. I am the CEO of United Good Builders Mission and NGO operational board in the US and Ghana. My questions. As the Shadow Minister, most times our ministers will come to the United States and officially. And the diaspora has always felt that we have not gotten a full share, whereas who sits in the seat. Doing business in Guyana is a challenge, and it remains a challenge for us for many reasons. Technological delay and all the other things. I would like to ask what you will do or what yourself and team have in mind for us moving forward? All of them sitting with engagedness. Please permit me, Madame Moderator, to speak on behalf of the women I serve. Domestic violence in Guyana worldwide continue to be an alarming situation. In Guyana, by practicing, it is unacceptable. Looking at some of the behaviors of parliament and seeing a fellow parliamentarian on the opposite side of Renobodeldo that may have been a good representation in itself is unacceptable. We've looked at the issue of the youngster, in fact, I was involved in that case. Now, a whole family cannot be located in the region because of that incident involving a member of the government. We're very concerned that the judicial system is not working for us. We're concerned, as a former cop, I see one of my former officers in the audience. Most of you would know him. I am concerned, we are concerned that the judicial system is not working for us. In the United States, we can have the court ensure that victims have a chance to represent themselves. And in the absence of the victim, the court represents them. Can you, as a member of parliament, ensure that the sex that they are included in? And finally, Madame Moderator, some space is needed. Well, I'm sorry. Permit me to address the matters that are very serious. And the women that I represent are not here, so I can come their voices. I've heard of the issues and I understand the name of the distinguished woman, the woman who has served, as was mentioned. Look at the mother of only boys. And I always, as a feminist, I always have to create that balance when criticisms are me. And I believe as a woman and as a feminist and an activist, if you control laws as a woman, you must be willing to take it back from any gender. And so, while we respect the surface, let's not miss the point that if you help laws, you must be able to receive. And that individual is no easy function. So, some of the responses, I think it's unfair to the organization, but thank you.
All right, I wanna, we're gonna start with the last point first. Because I happen to share a different view. I believe with all my heart about what, you know, Martin Luther King said, darkness cannot drive our darkness, only light can. And I think it is important, particularly as women in politics, that we understand parameters and that we understand respect. It is paradoxical, it is contradictory. For you, the same, if you wanna give laws, you gotta take laws and then speak about empowering women. I'll be very clear on that. There is political discourse and then there is disrespect. And it is particularly troubling because you are dealing with someone in your own party. And so you have no business insisting on standards from anybody else if you are not willing to have standards about the way you conduct your discourse. And that for me is a non-negotiable, a thing that everybody in your own family. Like I said, for me, discipline is important. And it is important that as leaders, we model discipline. All right? Because it comes down to issues of morality, and we're talking about dealings within a family. She's not a member of the PPP. She is a member of our family and must be treated as such. And when you hold important positions, you have to lead by example. So I wanna be very clear on that. Because if I cannot protect a woman in an organization that I serve in from misogynistic attacks, I can't do anything for the women of Guyana. Charity begins at home. So let's talk about the issue of the diaspora. For a long time, we have had trouble engaging the diaspora for two, for one particular reason in fact. And it is that intangible thing called attitude. You know, very often we set up structures and systems and so on, but we don't, we don't understand the need to change those intangible things called culture and, you know, the way people see and do things. And so I'll tell you what the problem has been with engaging the diaspora. You have people in Guyana who haven't left, who have stayed through it. Perhaps did not have or did not take the opportunity to migrate when it is presented to them. And so they're there. And then you have people who migrated, who came, advanced themselves, developed in the developing world and genuinely want to come back home and make a contribution. Guyana needs the contribution, so what is the problem? It is in the intangible of attitudes. Where if you talk to the average Guyanese man, I'll tell you, I've been in here, this trouble all the time, where you been? Can we be honest? And then you have some people who, not with any malice, come back from the diaspora and know everything. I mean, let's have the hard conversations. Oh, you people are so, this is not how it's done, and so, you know. I don't understand that we are a young society, we just of slavery and people telling us what to do, and you come back and tell us what to do. And I've been in here, this arse, and that stuff. And so you have two people with the best of intentions, but the intangible of attitude is preventing that symbiosis from happening. So what do we as leaders have a role to do? We have a role to help our people locally understand that these are partners in the development of Guyana. And just like, you know, when you're holding it through the battle, they're like, say, you go and spy on them, go and see what's going on, and then come back and tell us. These are the people that are coming back to tell us that hey, this is how we can develop this, this is how we can do that, and they are seeing how that works. And this is what we need to do. And the diaspora understand that you're not coming to learn it or anybody, but you're coming in as a part. And so all that is required is a simple attitude adjustment, that we as leaders have to champion. But some of us force the division because it keeps us in control. I'm not afraid of an enlightened and a united people because it could only be known, redone for the benefit of Guyana. So we gotta adjust our attitudes on both sides if this thing is gonna work. And then we've got to get them to the system of making it work. One of the things that I advocate for all the time is something called the skills map. I want to know where all the Guyanese are in the world, and I want to know what business they do. So if I need somebody from the EPA, I must know that there's a Vincent Adams out here to diaspora. If I need somebody that can talk about police reform and about advocating for victims, I need to know that there's a Belita Montecue here that does what she does and can come back home and impart that knowledge. So we gotta stop this amount of talk, there's too much talk, it's time now for action. And so organizations, just like the one that Belita leads, for example, could lead the way in doing that and beginning to understand where we are in the world. You know that there are more Guyanese living outside of Guyana than in Guyana? With some remarkable skills, but I met Violet Kim the other day, an amazing lady with a PhD in, guess what, energy economics. Why isn't she at home serving? But she's not there because another certain man named Arjat who believes that he alone has the brains to run a whole island industry. Exxon has 400 people appointed to the Guyana desk, but he, Bobby, and somebody else need to take on this thing on lock. The point is that we have the skills, so we have, the starting point is lacking the skills. The starting point is ensuring that if we're gonna retain consultants, and I'll tell you why this is important. Because for too long, we have spent money on initiatives that are not culturally responsive. You cannot bring people into our country who don't understand the culture because very often, they share culturally unresponsive programs and interventions. And so if you have a Guyanese born in Charleston, you know, Vice Town, the quarantine, that has come over you and that has excelled and is at the top of the game there, your priority has to be to win that person back to Guyana because God knows, for the first time we got them, I need to pay a property. Right? So those are the two immediate steps that I would take, and this is your domestic violence. It is a burning concern. I don't know if you saw on social media, there was a very disturbing video circulated, and I won't go into details about it. But suffice it to say that it's troubling, it's concerning, and I know that the government, in the person of the Minister for Social Protection, as indicated, they will be revising and revamping the domestic violence law. We are not in government, but one of the things that we will insist upon is that it goes to a special select committee. And in that committee, one of the people like yourself and your organizations will be able to make proposals to make the law better. And so that is what we can commit to. And I'd be happy for us to liaise and have people like yourself function as such a matter of experts for our team that will huddle to review it, so that we get the best. The beautiful thing about us in Guyana is that where we are, other people have gone before. So we don't need to learn the lessons the hard way. We can actually look, we can learn, and we could, we could adapt. And I think those were the three issues that you asked that we addressed, and so I hope that I did that justice. Thank you.
Always there's more time for the women.
Thanks for having me here. My name is Maxwell Wallace, and I was thinking about my qualification, the only one I found. My birth certificate. She said, I'm a Guyanese. That's your qualification. That's why, just one, here's a citizenship question, two parts of it. It seems we all agree that change must come to Guyana and it must happen next election cycle. So little part question. I wanted to share a set with the United States Commission that there are 40,000 Venezuelans in Guyana. And it's said 80% are Guyanese parents. I don't know a lot of way to that. But it has so many people for the next election cycle. Because when somebody is a Guyanese parent, you can get...
Speak up.
When someone is a Guyanese parent, that means they are a native kid. It's automatically, they can become Guyanese and they have the rights to vote. And so, another partner said that it's much more than 10,000, maybe 60,000. So I dread to think what would happen in terms of registration for voting. And that means biometrics, if you really process people and you say they're genuinely Guyanese, biometrics and paternity doesn't really matter, you have to deal. So I would want to know that what system or what are the thoughts around dealing with that crisis that I see Philippines planning, if she will, to have a meeting with it. They are planning to do an authority, not just animalist, but making illegal people legal. Plus, our laws in terms of... Plus, our laws in terms of citizenship need to be, uh, revamped. Because we're the only people, like, you have to five years or seven years, you can give citizenship with all the rights and privileges. In the Bahamas, before you get citizenship, you gotta get 15 years as a permanent resident, or maybe 10 years before you leave a high school, you get the rights, you can buy land and all that. Why are we five and seven years? The second part of the citizenship question is, is Flora Tsing, she is the commissioner, uh, first, we're putting her, election commissioner.
Chair.
Is she the chairperson? Is she on contract and when will that happen? Is Flora Tsing on contract and when will that happen? Are we going in this election with her as the chairperson? If you can choose a like of that initiative, and not a party like you, but you're a bit of a pressure, so let's hear it.
Okay, good for that. Well, I'm certainly, uh, I'm certainly going to try. And, you know, his question really does bring to the fore something that I have been laboring for the last two or three years. And it started when the government, and very namely, we have a government that sits in power by one seat majority. So they, in no way, shape, or form, um, have a commanding or overwhelming mandate in the context of, of, of a mandate that the government can receive, right? So what they started out this process with was they amended the Registration of Births and Deaths Act that dealt with, particularly that aspect that dealt with late registration of the citizen. Now, in other countries, for example, in Karakon, if as an adult you find yourself without a birth certificate, there are a number of steps and processes that you have to move through to establish that you are entitled to birth certificate. So for example, things like an affidavit from the primary school you went to, or members of the community, your clinic card, records if you had any, and a number of requirements you have to, um, satisfy. What the government did is that they didn't allow that. And said that an affidavit from a justice of the peace or a Toshaw in the case of an indigenous community could execute an affidavit and say, yes, you are barred here, you are here. And then that you could go to the GRO and become a citizen. So we flagged that on the floor of the National Assembly, but they, they passed it anyway. With their one seat majority. Then, next, we saw the amendment of the Presentation of the People Act to achieve some particular aims. Fast forward to 2024, where are we? You have a nation of about 28 million people on our western flank. Because the government has not made any attempt to check migration into Guyana, what you have now, by our count, is in excess of 16,000 Venezuelan nationals. 20% of those are documented. Now, the government has to decide on a story, eh? Because when this thing first started, they said in the National Assembly that these were warrows. The indigenous tribe of people that move back and forth over the border. And then suddenly it stopped being warrows, and then Janyio Gati, who said, you know, those people are Guyanese returning home. You remember on the far border, when people were this and that, they left, and so they're coming back home. So we said to them, no, give us the information. Because we are talking about this issue, they are accusing us of being xenophobic. Because of course, as far as they're concerned, you must not say anything, they must do what they like. And either they can brand new whatever they like, and that will shut you up. Well, they will be very clear that we never gonna be shutting about the matter, because what this is in effect doing is taking the political direction, the future of our country, out of the hands of Guyanese. And that is problematic. That is compounded by the lack of an immigration policy. Now, you all live in the US, you have things about the clear path, the citizenship, etc. We don't have that in there, it's who you know in the GRO. That is your clear path. And it's evil, it has indications. And I am particularly concerned about Venezuelan migrants because, you know, I read and I got some sense. And I know that there is a danger of something called a soft invasion happening. And, you know, the trouble that I'm having with you, Fanny, is that he's traversing the world over, yapping and, and talking and, and not understanding that at home, you need to put systems in place. Because I'll tell you, we are relying, as we rightfully show, on the support of the international community, um, in the case of, of Venezuela. Because of course, we have a military of about 3,000 and so on, compared to Venezuela with, and we have a few hundred thousand and fancy jets and so forth. We don't have that, so we have to rely on the international community. But let's be clear, that only comes into play when there is a question of the use of force in the deliberate injection of population into another nation, and not a question of the use of force. So what role will the international community play then? In protecting us? They can't. And so it is up to us to craft systems to make sure that we are protected from this. Because in international law, there's a thing called self-determination. It is an actual concept that people in locality can determine where or who they want to go for them. We saw it happen with Crimea and Russia. So there's not, there's not a lack of precedent. And this is not me being alarmist, this is me saying, there's a clear and present danger here, it has to be addressed. In region one already, Guyanese are outnumbered 3 to 1. In region one, imagine that spreading throughout the Siblivo. What the consequences will be. And I am not aspiring malice to the Venezuelans, but understand that these people honestly, the leader of the Siblivo belongs to them. Because this is what they were taught from nursery school, right? So they're coming here with the leader, they're being Siblivo in your country. Do you understand, Mon? Do you see the dilemma that we are in? So this government has to be serious about addressing this issue. There is urgency for an immigration policy, we've been saying it for the last three years. We have to get to a point where there is a clear path to citizenship. Now, they are reporting blamadishes, and I want you to understand the implications of this because a seat in parliament is between 5,000 to 7,000 votes. So it has implications. So we will continue to call for, um, the reforms in that regard. And we will also continue to call for the government to be a little more serious in addressing this issue. The last one that I wanna make in this regard is that based on their own numbers and research, the Venezuelan male has come for the fastest growing prison population in Guyana. So we have a crime and security issue on our hands. Not to mention a beleaguered healthcare system, because you already don't have nurses. And then you dump 60,000 people on an already beleaguered health and education system. We are, we are setting ourselves up for disaster. And just like the GPL, the government has demonstrated that it does not have a clue, they don't have a clue on how to deal with this. One of the things that the APNFC did was to establish this operation called Operation Armadillo. And what that did was that it had military presence in all of the frontier villages. We don't have that anymore. They have the people, they put these soldiers and the officers cleaning drains in Georgetown as a part of the cleanup campaign. And that, that, to me, is so disrespectful. I, I am the child of an army officer, and I have a problem with that. So, on this issue of quality, I'm saying, I don't know if the lady is on a contract or not. But the nature of contracts is that they can change, they can be renegotiated, they can be terminated for cause. It is a question of what we are willing to agitate for as a people. We saw what public pressure did that caused Nigel Darrell to resign. And we have to be willing to bring that type of pressure to any situation that we want to see change. Our country did nothing without a demand being placed on it, it never has, and it never will. So I will stop there to make room for more, um, questions if you may have.
One, one second. Thank you. We have a few questions coming in online. I wanna pose a question to Mr. Zier. They are asking if you have any intent to run for leadership of the party. And secondly, they also wanna know, in light of the treatment of young people, what is the plan of the opposition party to include young people in the progress and move of the nation?
Somebody clearly said that. But we're gonna, we're gonna answer these questions. Look, as it relates to the leadership of the, of the PNC, I wanna say this very, very clearly, and I hope that you hear my heart in all of this. I could easily stand here and say yes and take the pressure off of me. But that is not where my heart really is, because I will tell you that my concern is that in doing that, I am perpetuating, frankly, dysfunction. When is Congress? Yeah, but August is not a date. Right? And so I understand that whilst I could very easily go with all of this, my deeper concern is that we do not feed in. I am not willing to feed in to dysfunction. The PNC has a constitution. It is the supreme document that guides our party. And Congress happens within a framework. And so, you know, as others reserve the right to declare and declare, how do you declare for a Congress that hasn't been announced? And so I am not willing to feed into the dysfunction. When a date is announced, and we know the 5th, the 6th, the 7th of August, a process will be kick-started. And it is within that process that decisions are going to be made. Because let me be clear about something, you know, people talk about leadership of the PNCs if it's just something you run up for. No, it has implications. Let's not. It has implications. You're not going to lead a major party. It has to take the fight to a government, that's something you arrive at lightly. You gotta consult with your family because whether you like it or not, you need their support on the journey. Do you understand what I'm saying? And so, you know, the, the dysfunction that we're seeing, I am not willing to, to feed into it. Let's do this thing properly. Announce when Congress will be. What are you running for? And be clear that you're gonna win a Congress that hasn't been announced? No, no, let's talk about this. If we don't be talking about discipline, let's be disciplined. We can't talk about discipline only when it means controlling people and situations. Discipline can begin in the PNC, and it's going to begin with me. So I'm not going to feed into that because we have to focus on holding this government accountable. Look, two people have stated their intentions, and a whole site show has the gun. You understand? Name, calling, and who? We're gonna keep our eyes on the ball, and that is holding this government's feet. So I assure you, once we begin to kick-start a process, due consideration will be paid, very clear decisions will be communicated within a particular framework. And that's my position on that. All right? So let's focus on holding this PDPC government feet, um, to the fire. They are messing our country up. We got people living in black hole, we don't have water, you can't walk the roads in, in peaks before a sand truck. Uh, most, you know, takes you out. We have real pressing issues. We gotta reform our healthcare, we gotta reform our education sector. We will focus on that. And when a date is announced, that the processes are kick-started, information will be forthcoming. What was the other thing, plan of the opposition for young people? Look. You know, one of the things that I, as far as speaking my name, never, it's getting into trouble sometimes. So I pause because I'm trying to... No, not to hold back, but to find the way I know to say it. That's the truth, I said, do it. So here's the truth. We have to decide, oh, we're gonna treat with young people. That's the first thing. Right? Because for somebody like me, you know, oh, she young, she just come, and so on and so forth. And this disposition that we have for young people, we gotta fix it. Because the point of fact, I'm older than the sitting president, and I'm in honor of two young adults, I understand the confusion because I don't look it. But... But the point is, we have to adjust our attitude to our young people. And it's particularly important for Guyana. We have the largest population of young people in Karakon. It therefore means that the interventions that we have have to be crafted by young people, for young people. I have a 20-year-old in medical school, right? And I'll tell you, they are far more advanced than I ever was at their age. And so we have got to hear more from them about how they see their future in Guyana. And I'm sorry, but to do that, they relate better to younger people. And so we can't have it in cake and bake. We can't say that we have to attract young people, but we don't want to trust young people with leadership. Counterpoint is, so we gotta begin first to understand, we have to trust that our young people are capable, and that their hands are outstretched, and that they're waiting for us to place the opportunity in their hands to show us what they can do. And that's the beginning of the conversation right there. And from that earnest engagement, that honest engagement, they're like, you just come, you know they're talking about. So let me hear from you. Where is that you see yourself? In the case of our party, where is that you see your party going? If we could come to it with an open mind, then we can begin to craft programs. So for me, I'm not even gonna try to tell them, so we're gonna do for them. Because I'm not even sure what we want to do for them is what they want or need for that matter. So the first order of business has to be to open the door for them, to have them understand that they have an equal and valued place at the table, and show them the respect that they deserve. and show them the respect that they deserve as young people. So I hope that you are on my, you would have answered that question.
Thank you. There we have it. A lot of wisdom, a lot of knowledge. Let's have the next question, please.
Alright, that I've done now. A month, I just wanted to follow up on the question from the individual who asked about Venezuela's citizenship and registration. Your response, you stated that the government passed an act, a parliament to change the way, wanting the mechanism to be getting works and cases settled. As a parliamentarian and as a party, can you not test that in the courts? Citizenship is a fundamental right. And the act of changing and altering how one becomes a citizen or establishes a citizenship is not something that the mayor passes in the legislature. So can you explain to me, number one, is that the process in Guyana Parliament? And why is the opposition or others not taking that to the court in order to challenge the constitutional activity that they do? That is an absolutely brilliant question. And this is why... Let me be blunt, this is why it's important that we understand that we each have a role to play in this struggle. Alright, because he is correct. Citizenship is not a privilege that is just handed willy-nilly. It is something that has to be guided by a process. And I for one believe that we must as far as possible test all of these things in a court of law. And this is why, you know, it comes back to what I've been saying before, understanding our roles and our strengths. I've been practicing law for 21 years now, but I'm not a litigator. There are people in our party with those strengths. And that is why we gotta stop all of these side shows and get together around the table. Yeah, you can feel free to comment. No, this is why we have to stop the side shows, get together with the people who are versed and understand and are good at litigation and keep the government off the court steps. But when we engage in side shows, it takes our energy away from what we have to do. So I agree with you. I completely agree with you and in fact, there's something that I will take up with my friend, senior counsel for when we get back, when I, when I get back home. Because I agree that we have to test these things in a court of law. Now, mind you, they, they, they will amend a particular segment of the law as it relates to late registration. And so, but absolutely, that is why the courts are there, to prevent the abuse of power by an executive and to, to interpret the laws passed by the legislature. So it is, it is a strong recommendation and I intend to certainly take it up at the level of the central executive when I return home.
Right there, after me there. So, very many, Mr. Manzo, I say welcome to you who has come to the US. I have a question in front of me, but before the question, I want his words to continue on the Venezuela issue. I am a military member of Guyana, a soldier. We know the dangers of a soft invasion. People, for those of us who don't understand a soft invasion is Venezuela not available and they don't have supply of aircraft or less, they're invader of the city. And that is the citizens that are extended into our country. Like Mr. Manzo said, there are thousands, there are parts of our region where their true Venezuela is every Latinx. That's a soft invasion right there. Before you know it, they have kids here. Before you know it, they're in power. That's, that's what's up with it. So we need to be aware of these activities of the immigration, Venezuela, or any other country. Alright, you know, the PBB is playing a game here because every time Manzo speaks, they, 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 they test to say, oh, geez, I'm not gonna escape it. Alright, we know it's, it's an action-oriented machine that we, that they're putting in place. Because if our government, you know, cares so much about people in the world, why did they allow our nation to resist? From Africa, now, why we have to change the system? So I encourage you to continue motion, alright? People have been asking, now, what else can we do on if we are going to, you know, play a letter blind card to what is the Venezuela issue? Online question from Miss Soty Kano. She's asking if you're doing other cities? If you're living in the United States, cities? And secondly, the other question was, if citizens, if they're, if they're Guyanese living in the diaspora are allowed to register to vote in Guyana?
So we'll take the last first because I do have a comment on the Venezuela issue. Look, if you are a Guyanese, you were born Guyanese and you know live in the diaspora, of course, you are entitled to be entered to the list, the NRR, the National Register of Registrants and to be extracted onto voters' list. Once you're over the age of 18, you register from the age of 14. If you are the descendant of a Guyanese bear and then the law does provide for citizenship by virtue of descent. And so you go home with your parents, birth certificate, your birth certificate. You go up to the GRO and you, you, you get yourself your certificate. You don't have to have an affidavit or anything.
You can be done online here.
And frankly, I know that they put it online and there are people who have applied online and they have received their, their documents within a reasonable time. So absolutely, the question of cities, if you invite me, I will come. And then the issue of Venezuela, look, you know, I'll tell you what bothers me even more about the Venezuela issue. In addition to the attitude of this government, it is their shortsightedness. Now, we have passed a $1.4 trillion budget in the votes. Check to see the percentage of that that is dedicated to the development of Essequivo. It is embarrassingly low. It is embarrassingly small. You're talking about a region that spans five of our administrative regions and that accounts for over 75% of our GDP. There's a reason why Maduro is interested in our land because as goes the land, goes the sea. And so your maritime boundaries are determined by your land boundaries. So clearing Essequivo, Exxon and all of their operations smack dab in the middle of what will be his? EZ. So understand, this is not just something that they wake up and do. These people play the long game and unfortunately, we in Guyana play in five-year cycles and we have to stop it. No one would expect that this government understanding the threat of Venezuela causes, that they would focus on the development of Essequivo, that you would see significant investment in infrastructure to incentivize and catalyze the movement of Guyanese into the area. But you don't see that. What you see, a massive infrastructure project, where? Along the coast. Of course, that based on the predictions that it might be underwater by 2030, make it make sense. It doesn't make sense. And so we have to champion the solutions for the populating of the Essequivo with Guyanese, for investing in infrastructure. And one of the plans that we had in government, that past president Grater made very, very clear, that we were setting up tongues in all of these regions. We didn't just declare a tongue ship in Malia for the fun of it. It was intended to allow an administrative hub to be set up in every region and so to grow out and build out infrastructure from within the regions. This is why we placed a heavy emphasis on air transport. Whilst at the Civil Aviation Authority, I was the project manager for a 25-year civil aviation master plan. And what we planned out was an airport, a regional airport in every region. Because of course, it would take time to build out road infrastructure. But you would build an air transport infrastructure in a faster time. So there was careful planning, but we know the PBB has a problem with plans and impact assessments and so on. So going forward, we are committing to heavier investment in Essequivo in terms of infrastructure and in terms of catalyzing the population, incentivizing Guyanese to begin strategically retreating from a coastline that we may very well lose and to begin to populate the Essequivo because we understand the importance of population for our territorial integrity, right? So, thank you for those questions.
Hello. Thank you so much for responding to this, walking through that area that I asked for. I'm providing such invaluable information. My question is, my name is Deli Gray and my question is, what preparations is your party making to contest the elections in 2025? Thank you.
Thank you for that question. It's a very, very important question and I know it is a question that is on the minds of every party member and of every supporter of the PNC because we are, for all intents and purposes, the largest party in the coalition and the largest party within the APNU. We have to get ourselves together and very quickly. We have to. And I'm not prepared to sit here and just, oh, yes, and they give you fluff and they know. You have to get it together and quickly. We have a window of opportunity here to unite our party, to come up with the best possible formulation that will see us getting back into government. Which is why I keep saying that party unity cannot be a question for after Congress. It has to be a question for now. Has to be a question for now. And so I am personally confident that once we seize this window of opportunity and do the right things, reconfigure if we need to in terms of, of, of leadership and we seize the moment, then we have a, we have a path to victory. But the question is, are we, you know, they got a, they got a saying, a saying about the first judgment was given, you've got to begin in your own house first. We got to begin, get in our own house in order before we can truly and effectively put the nation in order. And so for me, step one is party unity. Because I am telling you, man, I know my brothers and sisters in the PNC. I know their strengths. I know their abilities. And I'm telling you that we are head and shoulders above what we have now for a government. But we have to have leadership that will unify us and that can understand that we each have to function where we function best. So that's the first step of preparation. And then once we do that, it's a question of launching a campaign, which frankly, should have been done months ago because you're always and you have to as a party, always be in campaign mode. I don't subscribe to this thing that you gotta pause and then go back. Always have to be at it. We have to get up of the reactive mode. We have to be proactive. And so I'm saying to you in all honesty, we got to fix some things so that we are emergent stronger, we're emerging better, and we can take on the, the, the PBB. I love, I frankly, I'm not concerned or worried about our capability and our capacity. We stand head and shoulders above them in terms of governance. For the, for the, for the five years the coalition was in government, we saw tangible improvement and development in every sphere of Guyanese livelihood and living. Everything was not done perfectly. And sometimes I think we give in to the human tendency to focus on what we did not correctly and lose focus on the things that we did. We did good things and we did more good than we did wrong or we did more right things than we made missteps. And so for me, it is a question of how do we build on that. We have the vision for a people-centered approach. We have the vision for delivering a good quality of life for Guyanese. We started on the road and in three, 30 years, Guyanese saw tremendous change. So I have no doubt about our capacity, but we have to get ourselves in a state of readiness and we owe the people of Guyana that. This is why I'm big on party unity. This is why I'm big on us honoring each other in our party. And this is why I'm big on saying that we cannot take our eyes off of the ball.
Ah, there you have it, some motivation. Does anyone else have any questions? We invite you to indicate. Okay, we'll come to you and, okay, we'll come to you. Mr. Berg?
Good afternoon. My name is Mr. Berg. I want to follow, have a question from, follow up on the previous question of elections. Do you envisage the PNC going to elections in the coalition? Is there any indication that it is? So that's my first question. And they told us about the coalition. The coalition is the parliament, but politically, as a political party, there's a coalition, there's the abstract coalition. So that's the basis of my question. I know that the coalition exists based on previous elections and the last elections in the parliament, but the, the PNC has left the coalition. And so my question is, is the party partly engaged in coalition talks? So that when the elections are called, there is a coalition? Because I don't think the PNC will be election alone. And in the context of that, I heard people say Congress will be held, yes, Congress will be held at the office. And it doesn't seem practical that if you prepare for elections, the Congress will be held at the office because the PBB's Congress is next month. And to me, if the PBB's Congress is next month, they can have all the elections this year. So that's my first question and comment. Secondly, you kind of feel? I, somehow I don't think that, at this unit of diaspora, no PNC's policy is... on Venezuela and on the Venezuela map. Uh, maybe here, speeches, the talk of President Congress is in Sweden. But I guess if people were to go across the country and ask them, what's the PNC's policy that would be different from the PDP in terms of Venezuela? I'm not sure anybody would give us a cool, direct answer. And so, um, for instance, this Venezuela, Guyana issue can grow up into a real global capacity. We have Venezuela, um, a lot of countries building parts of drugs in Venezuela. We have Russia down there. So you have Venezuela, Iran and Russia playing and China, I mean, if you see Venezuela with regard to their claim on Guyana. And then you have the United States, Canada and the rest of the world supposedly impacting us because of the Exxon investment. But I don't think I understand the, the sheer political importance of what is happening here. Because governments are saying, um, and we haven't heard the party in parliament or other ground actuate in a different approach to the Venezuela issue than the government. We understand that, yes, we have to show national unity, but I think the government is really investing up. And I think if the party wants to distinguish itself from that confusion, um, we, the government is somewhat pleasing the Venezuela because they want to come together, their folks, and they're confusing people. So I wonder if there's a separate policy on Venezuela that the party has. And the other thing is, um, regarding to this registration and I have been wanting to mention, um, or recommend that this, this amendment to the laws may be challenged. Generally speaking, we know the party talks of policy issues at press conferences, but I'm not sure how many people listen to those press conferences. And then the media, 90% of the media supports government. So I'm wondering if there's a, um, a different mechanism coming up to elections that the party would employ to let people know what their policies are. We get a lot of complaints about this, about this, but I'm not sure we know what the PNC's plan is and their policies are. So that's my point.
Thank you. Can you come for the Rick for Berg? Thank you for being here with us. You know, um, we get another cost to Rick for back again. Well, you want to be clear that me giving you know. Right? You know, oh, you must put distance between yourself and your car wash. If you didn't put distance between themselves and Jango after Sioux Gate. So we give enough, oh, brother, Rick for time for being here.
And you're so worth it.
And you're so worth it. So thank you for being here and, and always thank you for your insightful and incisive, um, questions. I'll start from the last one first. Absolutely, there has to be, um, a different strategy. And I believe that the strategy lies in grassroots, in getting down there and talking with the people. There is no substitute for that. Anybody that knows me knows that I'm a champion of social media because I understand the utility of social media. But you have to declare that there's no substitute for going into your communities and talking with your people, having them touch and feel you and to hear your heart on matters. And so look for the last, uh, from the beginning of the year, as much as, um, as a member of parliament, myself and colleagues can, we have gone to the communities and we're talking with people. What I desire is a far more coordinated approach to the outreach. I would like to see where the leader of the opposition goes into a community and he's there with 10 of his MPs and we're finding out and so on. That is what I would like, um, to see. Because engagement on the ground is important. But let's not make any mistake. We live in a globalized world now. And so the engagement of the international community is increasingly assuming importance. If it's anything that we would have learned from our 2020 elections and we cannot neglect our interactions with the international, um, community. So we have to do both. We gotta walk and chew gum at the same time. So community engagement, every village, every, um, township, every community, we have to be there communicating our message to the people. With the advent of social media, we can reach 20,000 people in one alone. Rick for Berg, or many of them have a life, 20K viewing. So we have to make use of that, uh, mechanism as well. But the mechanism is one thing and messaging is another thing altogether. And I think that is the point you are getting at. There is no doubt that geopolitically, there's a lot happening in Guyana. We're the, we're the location of a confluence of a number of factors geopolitically. You've got BRICS, you have the US scandal, you have Caricom and all of China, you're to the part of BRICS and all of those interests are literally playing out before our very eyes within Guyana. And so we have to have a strategy and we have to have a plan that allows us to pursue our national interest above anybody else's agenda. The beautiful thing about the party to which I belong is that we have produced giants as it relates to international relations and, and foreign policy and diplomacy. So I know that we have the skills within to be able to craft the strategy and some key components of that strategy has to be, have to be, one, the protection of our territorial integrity and our sovereignty. That has to be the first thing. In this regard, what we have proposed is first and foremost, a border commission. A border commission comprised of a cross-section of Guyanese intellects, organizations, whose task would be to craft strategies and interventions to ensure that our borders are secure. We have also proposed a foreign policy council which will bring the best and brightest minds in foreign policy, in international relations in one place, in academia, the minds from academia, from civil society in one place to craft foreign policy that will put Guyana's national interest first. Because what we are seeing is increasingly a transactional approach to our foreign policy. And when you engage in transactionalism to the degree that we are doing, you're setting yourself up for your sovereignty to be undermined and that is dangerous. So at the policy level, and we all understand that policy guides everything else, we have proposed those, um, two interventions. We recommend the monthly meeting of the sectoral committee on foreign relations. I have to be the deputy chair of that committee in parliament and our last meeting was in November. But Madura just passed a law on exit to the other and thought, can't call a meeting yet. I have written countless times and quarreled in public countless times. And so now the energy has to be focused on removing them and putting in place a government that can handle this business. So those are just two of the, of the, of the solutions that we propose. The other thing that we have to have, and I've referenced it here before, is a song migration policy. In the 2015 to 2020 iteration of the APNU ASC government, we commenced work with the IOM on developing the migration profile. Because you see, the dilemma is this, we need people. For the scale of development that we have to do, we have to have people. But in the absence of song policy, we don't know who we need and how much quantities we need them in and where we need them. So these are the solutions that we have been proposing. So we are not devoid or bereft of, of solutions. As an elected fellow, we need to be very, very clear. Any citizen who finds himself in Guyana is entitled to the protection of their human rights and dignity. It is our obligation. And whilst we are a party to any UN convention, refugee and all of that, we have an obligation as a member state of the UN system to accord the full protection of the law. Of course, with the exceptions that again, break the law. If you break the law, you're subject to the laws any other person would be. And so we are committed to that. But our emphasis will be on strengthening the military presence in our frontier, uh, communities. Operation Armadillo saw results. It saw a reduction in the harassment of our managers from the syndicato. And so we have to do that along with incentivizing Guyanese presence in the SCQ. So I've, I've spoken of at least six solutions that we've proffered to, uh, this situation. You have a stiff-necked government however, and you will not implement it simply because it comes from us. So they have to go, we have to move them out so that the people who know how to do this can have the opportunity, um, to do it for the benefit of the people of Guyana. Coalition politics was the last point. I started off by saying coalition politics is the politics of the future. And let me tell you, and this is a man's view. I have no doubt that it will be returning as a coalition. I work every day with the likes of Sharon Duncan, with the likes of Kathy Hughes, with the likes of Kamaran Dranjat, every day. And we function in parliament. And anybody who does not see the importance of coalition is frankly my own thing. Because it is the politics of the future of Guyana. So, yes, the agreement that saw the, um, KPNU ASC coming into being has expired. And I believe that the expiration of that was not handled correctly. Again, messaging is important because as far as I understand it, the agreement came to an end and the ASC said, look, we will continue to work together in parliament. We are the parliamentary opposition. But as a party that is separate and distinct from the APNU, from the PNC, we will use this opportunity to regroup, to strengthen our party so that we are able to come back to the coalition with more.
Okay.
And that was the messaging that ought to be put out there. In the absence of that, it has led to all kinds of wild speculation. But for me, if I pick up the phone and call Kamaran Dranjat, he will answer. If I pick up the phone and say, Sharon, we need to go here today. He's like, girl, what time? And we are on it. Juretta Finance. Juretta, girl, was it done in the Natural Resources Fund? That is collaboration. That is cooperation. And I'm saying that it exists. And so we have to dispel these notions that there is some kind of criminality, et cetera, as far as I am concerned. And I can speak in the context of my relationship with our coalition brothers and sisters, that does not exist. And so I'm optimistic. I'm optimistic barring some insurmountable hurdle, which I can't imagine, you know, what that will be, that we'll be returning as a coalition. We're better together, we're stronger together.
Good afternoon, good morning, and evening. I have a question. Nobody have a question, right? My name is Pauline Harris. We have a airline, United Airline, it's flying from Texas, Houston, Texas to Guyana, four times for you. I'm glad I was here because you believe in it. Who are the Guyanese that don't realize flying on that airline to Guyana? And the other problem is that that will bring worse Exxon because that's going to come a Exxon project. And without it, why are they running and fighting for Guyana to Kennedy, to Texas, from Texas to Kennedy to Guyana? And we who are ready is come for something. I listened to you at your project presentation and you said before six months, you're all going to come back to the Natural Resources Fund for us to match you? They, they're coming, are they here? Because of these reasons, they're busy. Now they're still a kind of a team. If you want to go where you like, that, that may go travel, travel with it. Anyone who knows it wants to travel to Texas, to Guyana. Can you say that's fair? How do I think anything that's fair that I mean? For us, thank you.
I'm, I'm in, I'm going to try. I'm certainly going to try, look. So, of course, the development of, of air routes and of airlines, there are some numbers of, of, uh, there is as a result of a number of factors, including airlift, right? Capacity and, and, and the market for, um, movement. And so we have a near service agreement with the United States that allows that to happen and allows US carriers to come in and to fly between various points. It is a function of the market. So the government has to create the enabling environment however, to fully grow to the development of the air transport sector. So I don't think it is a bad thing that we have increased capacity into the country. Because when you talk about the ease of doing business, you look at Trinidad. And there are far more airlines flying into Trinidad than there are flying into Guyana. We need the capacity if we're going to be serious about being competitive in business. So I have no issue with airlines flying in. As somebody that needs to move around, I need to know that I got capacity to move me from A to B. So I have no difficulty with that. I hear your concern about the fact that Exxon is going to be covering the stocks. I hear that concern. And again, it goes back to this policy of this government. Let, let's be clear, this is provided for in, in, in the contract, right?
Yes.
So it's a question of contractual obligations. But guess what? As a government, we have the duty to ensure that we are able to properly audit the costs that are being submitted to us pursuant to these arrangements. Which is why for the life of me, I cannot understand how a government that is serious about maximizing returns from the hydrocarbon sector would not would not engage auditors that have experience in auditing these types of expenditure? I mean, more disrespecting the people I got now, but I mean, a tax auditor can do that. And so, as a solution, we have to have accounting and auditing firms with requisite experience contracted to work on our behalf. Listen, we have to dispel this notion that we could show up with our two long hands and niggons and talk about, you know, renegotiations and all kinds of things. It does not work that way. You have to have expertise at your disposal, and we do not have expertise. Barjan New is an expert in failed projects. So, he and Bobby Gosai and whoever the two auditors are, the people saying you can't see the meter, cannot be what Guyana has at its disposal to deal with this industry. We have to get investment firms, there are very good ones here in the US, that will talk to us and guide us about how we maximize. We have to have qualified auditors. There's KPMG, there's Price Swab, there's Houskoper's. There's so many firms that have done this for other countries that have gone this way before. But Barjan New expects us to believe that he can advertise and attract these people. And we have to reject that. Our government would see the institutional strengthening and capacity building of Guyana to deal with the sector. We started it with establishing a Department of Energy, then disbanded it. We will reinstitute those departments and institutions and ensure that when we show up to a table, we show up with the best and brightest that our oil money could afford, so that we get the best for Guyanese out of all of these deals. So, Colin, I hope that that helps to assuage to whatever degree you could your anxiety, which I completely understand. I'll restart after. But I know that a lot of the people, I think, are going to wrap up soon.
Good evening, Honorable MP. My name is Indian Drakes. Now, I think the PD and C part believes to go backwards before they go forward. Now, I was chairman for the Queensland DNC group, and I was vice-chairman for the Adamson, Queensland North and South Convent for group in the eighties and nineties. Now, sometimes you will get a message, mobilizing members because different instances of the group, that is very difficult. Now, we have social media, when you go out and do those things, let people know that you are in the community doing these things. The other thing I want to speak about is, Guyana has already been invaded by Venezuelans. I was Guyanese, I went from traveling a bus of these forces, and they were Venezuelans. A Guyanese guy came into the bus. Now, people with military training like me, with no one I'm speaking about, he came in the bus, he saw one of the Venezuelans, he recognized him, and they started speaking in Spanish. Because this guy, this guy used to live in Venezuela. Now, when they got out and busted, the driver asked the guy, "Where do you know him from?" He said, "That guy was a coroner in the Venezuelan army." I said, "No more."
And second, on the last point that we made first, that is the gravity of what we are facing. That is the gravity of what we are facing. And so, in addition to those recommendations that we made, the other thing that we have to focus on is national unity. The Venezuelan government and opposition are very united on the equitable question, you know? Very united? Right? They have varying degrees to which they believe this law should be passed or whatever. But on that question, they have one view. And so, as Guyanese, we have to have one view, and the government has a role to play. We as the opposition have a role to play. And I want to be very clear on something. We take a lot of flak, sometimes for the position that we take of supporting and talking about territorial integrity and sovereignty. But we must, we must. Because if we don't stand together, we don't have a Guyana to fight over. Do you understand what I'm saying? So, this question about us standing together, that does not mean that the government will continue this irresponsible path that is a result of not sharing information with us. Because like I said in my last communication to Yintan, if you continue to do that, it will affect our capacity to bring critical support to you. It has to be a free flow of information. Certain things, of course, in the interest of national security can't be disclosed, but at the bare minimum, you have to keep us informed so that we can in turn inform the people that trust us for valid and credible information, because they don't trust you all for it. So, absolutely, and as it relates to the PNC, and I think we have time constraints now, I'll end by saying this. When the party was formulated, it was formulated with the notion of party groups as the foundation of the party. It was formulated for a bottom-up approach. And I wholeheartedly agree that we have to be able to revitalize our groups. We cannot deny, however, that everything rises and falls on leadership. And not only do we have to maintain our party groups, but we have to be a party that inspires people to say, "Come, join us." And if we want to be honest with ourselves, are we looking right now like a "come and join us" type group? We are not. And so, we have to change that. Because not only do we rely on membership to win an election, we rely on supporters, non-members, we rely on crossover voters. And so, we have to transform ourselves into a party that will attract those people and keep their support. So, we have a major task ahead of us. It will require hard solutions. It will require the retiring of personal agendas for the betterment of the party and the people that trust us to represent them. And I think we have one final question.
So, before we wrap up, I'm going to indicate the persons who will be asking the questions, because I know they've been waiting. We have the young man, his hands raised, we've noted you, the young lady as well, you're noted to ask your question, as well as this young man. I will entertain you, but please, in the interest of time, please keep it short, okay? So, we will start with the young man. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable MP from Long Beach, New York. We keep hearing that we are not getting any information from our government. However, we have the stations stating that we are entitled to receive information. But we have a condition of information and refuse to release it now. In America, under the Freedom of Information Act, we take our homeland court, and so the people can get this information. Why can't we take your homeland court to get the information to the people in Guyana?
The short answer is that we can, must. We can, we absolutely must. That's the very short answer to the question. Do we have another question?
Good evening, Ms. Walter. My name is Walter Mary. I'm reminded, in the ten years of us, how I'm able to speak to you currently, right? If I have a situation in Guyana, I'm on the highway, I have a meeting to go retreat at, I mean, and if I want to speak to somebody in the opposition, there is no representation in area currently since 2020. But I'm in the underground, and I traverse the highway, right? I still feel every time I go down, when I see the people, right? And there's nobody on the highway from Athens that we can contact, right? And I speak to them when I'm in the city, and they say, "Oh, we have to find this place." But when I leave the highway, the contras are resistant of, because of traffic and constraint, I can hardly have what I get to do, right? Another issue that I would like... This constitutional reform is happening, right? For myself and others, there's no clarity in what this is about. It's seen as a, it will be an ongoing issue if this is what the press has said. He said, "God's going to be a libertarian organism, where the citizens will direct it, direct the citizens." If I think I got it right. My obvious issue is, there's a focus on Georgetown and the motion for the Georgetown. I think there's a big issue right now facing us in Georgetown, because rebuilding our hotels and so forth in Georgetown. A sewer system that I don't think anybody's looked at, and there is a city that will be moving to, and removing all vegetation in Silicon City, and I'm telling you, so I just have a highway. And the instance is where we buy a bunch of fighting trees. And I have trees at my establishment. What's going to happen when you take your part in the vegetation and put it on a silicon city? I don't know even where the thought of living on the side.
Thank you for those... You see, you put train on, you know, but we will answer three very quickly. As it relates to Silicon City, Silicon City, I think, is a prime example of the backwardness and incompetence of the government. Because we heard about Silicon City, they started clearing lines, two years now, digging roads. And then, two months ago, it finally announces that the master plan for Silicon City has just been commissioned. So, we built a hole and started digging roads for a whole city without a master plan. The government does not understand the importance of keeping our vegetation, you know, canopy and forest intact as far as possible and having it integrated into our development plan. This is why we promulgated the Green State Development Strategy. And if you go to that strategy, you will see that what it has as its focal point is not only building the ecosystems around low-carbon development strategies, but it goes beyond that. You go into the city right now, and you will see all of the millions, they've dug up all the tree and the trees and grass, and they've kept it with concrete. And the city is getting hotter as a result of the loss of education. You are right, we have an aging sewer system. And there is no investment to the degree of magnitude is required for the maintenance and the expansion in terms of the new capacity for the sewer system. But the overarching problem is that there is not some developmental plan for the city. There is no plan for the strategic retreat of the city and what that will look like. And so, this is why we have limited time to get our best minds around the table, and this is what we are committed to doing. Because look at the, you know, we call Guyana Little Dubai, but you look at that place 20, 30 years ago, it was sand and desert. And look at what they have been able to build because of vision. And not just vision, but sound development. So, that is what we are committed to doing. On the issue of constitutional reform, yes, it will be an ongoing, it has been. If you look at the history of constitutional reform in Guyana, it has not been overnight thing. The 2006 amendments that we saw came after over a decade and a half of work. So, there is no quick fix, it's a process that we have to go through. But I believe that as long as we have the political will on both sides of the political divide to get it done, that is a significant portion of the battle. And we have to chat with you after to, you know, go into the rudiments of how it will work. On the issue of contact information, we have a PR challenge, and I keep saying it. We have a PR challenge. I'm not going to sit here and attempt to mislead you. We have to leverage the power of social media. There are PNC groups in Yara Cabra. There's a PNC group, I was in Kurukuru a few weeks ago on a fun day with a PNC group. And so, the fact that you don't know that we are there means that we have to place greater emphasis on our PR. We have MP Nemo Flubes, one of those active and hard-working MPs that is responsible for that highway. And so, it is very clear to me from the feedback that we have to make this information public. There is an office of the leader of the opposition, but you are right, it isn't the city. And so, we have to begin to look at how we effectively decentralize our operations. But there are groups there that'd be happy to provide contact information for the people there.
Good afternoon, from Atlanta. Welcome. This is Amade Clement. This is Amade Clement, the host of the Zomi. I was at the last general election. The general council, I was at the last general council. I was at the beginning to the end, I went to the bathroom, but I must have fallen asleep when I had the election to be there on the next by Congress to office. Media television at that time. Now that all is set to be, now that elections are set to be for us without a specific time, all of the elections can involve fifty tomorrow's. The second to last year was, it wasn't safe anytime to do that. As we see here, how far are we taking to move? Or what can we do to figure out how we can get around this election? But elections can involve the last, the second to last day, it is promised before the last day.
Thank you, thank you so much. Um, you, you echoed what I said, that there is no date. By August is not a date. At the level of the CEC, what I can say is that members such as myself, we continue to push for a date to be announced. We have to have a date that is fixed. And there's no getting around that. And as members of the party, instead of feeling into dysfunction and saying, oh, Amanda, you can declare it. I'm going to declare, insist that we do the right thing and set a date. And once a date is set, a mechanism is kickstarted and rules of engagement are put in place because I want to be clear. After a Congress is held, we're going to have to work together. Which is why I'm not prepared to entertain personal attacks on any one of my colleagues. I am not prepared to call any one of my colleagues an agent of the DPP unless I have been controversial, the proof of saying. And I have said this at the CEC to all and sundry. And I will not countenance an attack on any member of the party. I've made it very clear, you won't hear it because Amanda don't leave things to the media or whatever. Because I believe in what happens in house stays in house, but it's out there in our republic. So we will talk about it. We don't hear the other side going around accusing their members of walking with the PNC, what nonsense. We have to stop it and we have to insist and demand from our leaders that they do better and that we act better. So yes, Amabel, I agree with you, a date has to be declared. And if you check the minutes of the central executive, you will see members like myself insisting that we got to do this thing and we got to do it the right way. Because I will end by saying this, darkness can't drive no darkness. And if we're going to control the DPP, we have to be different. Over there, one man decide who, you know, when and who going when and who torrent it is now and so on. No, 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 no. We are Democratic Party that subscribes to Democratic norms. And yes, democracy is a little messy sometimes. But as leaders, we have to understand that I can't attack my brother Raizdale because I can need him to do exactly what we're talking about here today. Challenge the commissioner of information in the court and to test the legal systems. I can't attack a ball of Lawrence because they got nobody organizing like ball of Lawrence, none. I can't attack an Amnali because she in the PNC law and I am a liar. I can't attack an Orbinor because of the somebody that has been in the party since quiet. And the point is, we have to put an end to the madness and the dysfunction. And I am saying that I can hold me a home. That's all who I'm responsible for. I am responsible for me and for me and my house. We're not going to feed into that. It will make sense if we done it, we done the right thing.
So we have one last question and that's it because we got to go ahead.
Uh, my name is John Dawson. Uh, I want to welcome Minister Brooklyn. I know this is not the first time, so let's welcome once again Brooklyn and Arce. I have six questions, but I'm only going to give one. Uh, after the 2020 campaign with this election, there was a lot of talk of election reform. It came from the Garcia Center, it came from the Ruby Federation and from the ABC countries. Uh, but I've seen a lack of emphasis on, on a push for new voters list. First of all, House to House registration, remove voter list and biometrics. The opposition seems to be liking when it comes to pushing for these, for these three, uh, uh, purpose, right? For that would be a word. Why is there not a push for House to House registration and new voter list and biometrics? Because I think this is the rich thing, we keep winning and losing the next election. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much, John, for those very important questions. On the issue of House to House registration, there have been some legislative changes. And instead of House to House registration, there is now continuous registration that offers an opportunity for its own type of mischief. On the issue of biometrics, we have been on the forefront of calling for biometrics. I want to be very clear about something, we have to up the ante. And I'm waiting for the PPP hats to come and say, oh, Walter and Arce calling for strife and disorder. But I want to be very clear, we have to up the ante. We have to be able to communicate to families the importance of this issue. Now, there was a point in time when biometrics would have provided a solution. But if you are illegally on the list, biometrics is simply conforming an illegal person that had no business be there in the first place. So the answer has to be a clean voter list. We have to purge the list of the dead people. Nowhere in this world does it make sense that you have a voter list the same size of your population. But I want to be clear that it will not come without a struggle. And I'm going to make an observation here and it's not intended to cause nobody discomfort. If it does, accept my regrets, but it's the truth. When we struggled for local government reform or local government elections rather, you go back and you check those videos and you'll see every Tuesday, members of the party headed by David Wager on their protesting every Tuesday. And so leadership is important. You know, you could tell everyone in Fosse, you want, but he was out there upfront with his placard. Every religious Jew, their inner shine. And it was as a result of that struggle that they were pressured into some of the reforms that we saw when it came to local government. And that is the model that we have to return to. That is, we have to be willing to pound the pavement and pound the road and get out there and demand what is rightfully ours. Because I want y'all to understand that the PPP has set the stage already, you know. The 2020 elections have shown us that they don't care how votes get in the box. Wanted in the box. This is why we have to watch them. This is why we have to watch them. But we also have to up the ante. The time for talking is gone now. We have to be out there and we as leaders have to be out there. Leading the charts, spreading the information and helping our people to understand just what is at stake. And again, it's not meant to disrespect or throw shade at nobody. I don't throw shade, I say exactly what I mean to say as clearly as I possibly can. So you understand what I'm saying, we have to up the ante. And you here, the diaspora have a role to play. Write to congressmen and women, highlight these things. Because the USA, their eyes are on Diana. The CIA direct to visit her. That's how, that's how up there we are now, right? And, and President Clinton was up in the gallery streets recently in the Alamo. Right? But it is an indication that we are not only having their notice or their attention. And so you in the diaspora, you have a role to play because they are paying attention to us. You have a role to play. Write to congressmen, write to representatives, highlight to them the dangers of what is happening. And be sure to highlight to them that free and fair elections is conditioned on a clean list. And to the degree that they don't insist on a clean list, they are contributing to any unrest that results from hacking contesting elections because people don't have faith in the list. So John, thank you for those questions and I hope that I answered all of your concerns.
As we come to a... As we come to an end to the QA, I want to ask you something. How old are your questions, did answering?
Yes.
Yes?
No.
No? Okay, we're going to do this again. People are coming back and you're going to come with your questions, okay? And your curiosity though may arouse as to what Amanda and that party is doing for a year.
Amanda, yes.
Generally speaking, are you intrigued as to what comes next?
It's a start, it's a start. It's a start.
Are we confident that with Miss Amanda's here as part of the African government, that we can see a positive change for our nation? That's why I do this at home. Because a lot of the times we in the diaspora, we have no clue what is going on in Ghana. So we need to hear it from more citizens as we will see. We need from anyone who is at the table to bring the information to us so that we feel confident that Diana is moving in the right direction or that there's someone advocating for us and speaking the things we are thinking here in the diaspora. So advocacy really here in New York, everyone should be encouraged to do more. There's a charge, there's been several charges here tonight. We need to be more involved and we definitely need to do more for Diana. So thank you, thank you for your questions. And at this time, I'm going to invite Mr. Aaron Lewis to give them a little thanks.
Okay, thank you. Know I'm not Aaron Lewis, but I just wanted to, to say thank you for coming out here. Thank you for coming out in your numbers to hear what is happening. And I want to leave a message with you, there is hope. There is hope. I see a path. And if it were not so, I would not have sent that to you. But it will require us to take hard decisions. It will require us to do some things that we have not done before. But always remember, there is hope. And we can do it, we must do it, and together absolutely will do it. So thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you. Evidently, a whole lot of people are talking within decades, I mean, working for the party. So I believe that I needed a night set. I've been around for 50 years as well. I don't know what I'm going to get for that, but full disclosure. Um, Madam MP, I think, uh, this has been a very good meeting. Some words of comfort. Truth. Truth is very important. People always see that politicians don't always tell the truth. But time and again, you've actually been inspirational in telling it like it is. And that's a good thing. So I want to thank you on behalf of everybody here. So making yourself available to talk into us and to letting us know the truth, which is always important. I prefer disclosure because I know this over time, some people have been commenting and I sat quietly by it, usually I do. And then there were those who questioned your height. I want to say in our family, I have had uncles who stood at almost 6'6". In our family. I stand out to say, Amanda is blood. We like, Amanda is blood. My mother is water. So let everyone know that she's not only a white girl. Not because we white. There you go. So thanks again for coming out and talking to us. I also want to thank the audience of the event, whoever they are, Mr. Dwight Stilwellson. I've called you name anyway, Mr. Benny Parks. And a few others that are not here. So seeing that they're not here, I'm not going to mention that any of this. I also want to thank a gentleman that I have seen for a while that came and I know this is doing pro bono service. And I know that I probably would not have hired some people to come and, and, and do what they are doing this afternoon. But it's awesome, Mr. Charles Nigels. I want to thank Bobo Vision for doing the recording for us. Appreciate him. And young artist for doing his bit in terms of us using the microphone and, and stuff like that. For ya. And of course, I can't leave out the man who's always available to go like Clinton, Hollis boy. Thank you. And of course, the people who asked to get us over here just now, we have to thank them as well, alright? So again, thank you all. We really appreciate it. And until the next time. Those are the announcements. Yes, we have some refreshments in the back for who's interested. Okay? Oh, Madam Moderator, you've done an accident job. I'm sorry. You did an accident job and we, and by the way, this young lady is an attorney at law. So you need anything else? This is a American, you all, I'm a liar. We didn't pursue this case. And they got some folks, if you haven't played the pool, you can get them, we're recording. And of course, um, Mr. Moore, as usual, I heard the Madam MP telling him to put the dude on the job. And of course, Mr. Moore, as usual, I heard the Madam MP telling him the party to do a job. And he's been doing excellent, he don't need our help. So we can let him do his thing. And of course, he's not the only one that can... And nobody raised the issue. We got to talk about this thing with detained people when they go home because they're speaking the government language. Madam MP, I am told that I don't want to watch this. And that's why I'm not even attempting to go. I don't want nobody to embarrass me. But we got to talk about that. And then the community, we need to give a voice out. In every... There you go. Well, I said it. I mean, a young man that will speak the truth every day is trying to teach the police, help the police. You know, I saw with the yellow police force, and I too am disappointed sometimes in what I've seen happening on the ground. And then, it's coming. Um, so retired assistant commissioner Pete was no... He signed it, "No, I'm going to go, right?" And I go to the office people, "Help the police." He probably be doing this all, but yeah. Do you have a present? Every woman, poor, thank you for being here. Yourself, yeah, really don't like. Appreciate it, yeah, right? And I think that is about it. Again, thanks everyone for coming out. This meeting is called a job.